It's not.
It is now. Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, real call.
Jenny David. Roger Mayhew. Charles Maltz.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Here.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Okay, anybody look at the agenda, any? Changes, deletions, admissions, we have one deletion E. And in place of that, we put nine one one. And E. Anything else?
Good enough.
Need a motion to approve with changes?
Motion to approve, house support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Comment.
Public.
Sorry.
You said I was doing.
Just thinking of. Just thinking of.
All right. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? On Zoom? Any public comment? No public comment. Thank you. Okay. Mister Brian Gilbert, Sheriff.
Sure.
Are you up?
I'm sure.
You're up.
You're here for A.
Yeah.
And we don't, there isn't any for B, so you're it.
Yeah, I was put on there, so anyway, staffing update.
Well, good.
What we got is the recall slips once are sent out. And we won't be able to act on that until after the twenty third, that's the cut update on.
That's what, February?
Yeah, so then if we don't get any response there. We're gonna uh reach out and see if we can get that uh position filled.
So first of all. Point of border is you want the position, you want that.
Oh, yeah.
Position filled.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, so you're. Tonight, you're coming to us asking us.
Well, this was. Well, you guys, you guys had put this on here for me, I didn't put this on here, but.
Oh.
We are, we need that position filled.
What position are we speaking on, Sheriff?
Uh, one of our deputies uh resigned, transferred down to Lansing, so that left us a vacancy. So we want to fill that position.
I don't have a problem filling it.
I don't either.
Do it by consensus.
I don't have a problem.
Okay, there you go. The formalities will.
We'll act on that uh after your twenty third.
And now you've tried to attempt to get this, one of the three.
Three.
Uh, come back.
Started the process.
So.
Was that the recall?
Recalls.
Okay.
Letters have been drafted and sent out, so we've got the responses and they've received it. So with this approval, then I will reach out to them and try to get a final answer, starting with most senior.
How much time do they have to?
Ten days from when they received it, so the. If I get no response from them, what would be the twenty third would be ten business days from when they received the uh the notices.
Okay.
For the one vacancy.
That was twenty third of uh February.
February, twenty third of February would be the ten days.
Will be the ten days.
Okay. That would be the date that if I got no response from phone calls or via written correspondence, that it would consider voluntary quit. And then you could proceed past them to the next states.
Okay.
Now, we don't have to, we don't have to go through this uh. T uh uh posting in the, posting within the union. Right?
Um, because everybody in the union.
Everybody in the union has a job, yeah. All right.
This is M. Cole certified, this is a deputy.
Yes.
So.
Are we still advertising them calls now?
We will resume or re-up the advertisement once we see if.
What's gonna happen on the twenty third?
Recall.
Right.
Sorry. We will start the next steps of attrition planning and all that type of things that we've discussed before, but. Nothing happens until we determine that our laid off employees are no longer. Going to fill that position that's now vacant.
What do you think the prospect ever?
Anything to start advertising them calls now, I mean.
By the advertisement is still up, I think, we could double check, I don't see it's probably buried, so what I will do is. Contact them close and have them bump it to the top of the list.
Does, we found out before it it. It terminates after a certain long time.
Or you can put it unlimited, which last time we put an unlimited type of thing, so it should still be in there, even if it's not. If it's still in there like I anticipated it is and I haven't checked yet.
Okay.
I can bump it, refresh it basically, and it'll go to the top of the list, again, that list is about three pages long.
Okay. Inmate reimbursement fee, that's.
I got a question about everyday staffing, are, are we, do we have an officer on the road twenty four seven?
We're covered.
We're covered, good.
Twenty four seven?
We're covered, yes.
Good. That's, that's what I wanted to hear.
Does it go from like? Twelve to twelve, uh, seven to seven and seven to seven?
Our hours are six to six, so twenty four hours.
Okay. I did, I couldn't.
Somebody got all four, yes.
Yep, we're good.
Good.
Okay.
That answers a big question, so.
Okay, and on the inmate reimbursement fee, how is that working?
Uh, we, we started that February one. We've got uh. Almost a little bit more about, he's been working hand in hand with uh Tom on it. So uh, we, we have billed uh some inmates for that.
Twenty dollars a day? Is it twenty dollars a day? Okay. Okay, I'd be anxious to see how that's, that goes, yeah, since it just started, yeah. Okay.
What about out of common?
The attorneys gave me an opinion, an initial opinion, which I got an email that gives that opinion, basically relates it back to the Escoda County contract. So I am at a status where I've sent them the Escoda County contract, but their first opinion based on my questions and the information I provided to them. That it would be contractual, it would be something that would had to be due through a contract amendment order in the next negotiation.
Right.
As far as charging an additional fee. But, well, I have not got a response yet on his review of the physical contract itself, because I didn't send it the first time.
Having to call Oskota?
Oskota for what?
And ask them what they thought of.
I have not called Oskota because.
I'd wanna wait for the lawyer to get back with a comment, I wouldn't want to jump the gun either.
Oh, see what the attorney says.
Yeah, that's what I'd wait for. Before I jump into something and it turns up real muddy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Matt got back with me, so you have.
How many you, how many are we billing then?
Right now, currently, the billing that's been created since the inception on February first. Uh, on sentenced inmates over Maw County will total fourteen thousand dollars, it's actually thirteen thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. That's for a time period between February first and the latest out date would be the beginning of July. So those are the current inmates that are being housed for periods of time. They have various out dates, so anywhere from the end of February, March, April.
To July.
Latest one is July. He's created bills for those sentenced inmates, for Oglewall County, it'd be just under fourteen thousand is what's gonna be billed.
Only sentenced inmates.
Only sentenced inmates.
And what's the percentage say? What's a rock percentage, I don't exact, I know any. I don't expect an exact. Or more than half in the jail sentence?
I don't want to go that far.
Really?
No.
What are they sitting there, just can't make bail?
Answer.
Well, you have, well, you have current arrests, you have people that are waiting for their trial process. Uh, so they're being held without bond or can't make bond.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, so you have people that are serving time and at some point. I believe the process, I double check with Tom, but. Like now from February first. If they get time served, then you go back to that date, time served, and they will pay for the time that they served.
Okay.
So there's some of those calculations will be thrown into.
Oh, oh. So. Just through a question on that, so. If they're not sentenced now, I mean, we, we cannot charge them a lodging fee, but once they're sentenced, then we can go back to the first day they were in jail.
If they got time served.
Yeah, time served is the key.
Okay.
Yeah, so what they're sentenced to.
Yeah, you mean if it counts, counts as time served?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The number of inmates that that billing for fourteen thousand is thirteen.
Thirteen personnel.
Thirteen sentenced inmates that include that fourteen thousand billing that was created.
Ah.
February third.
February first. That's up and down in the process that has been adopted by Tom and.
Yeah.
And we'll just monitor, we'll monitor how payments go on housing fees, we'll monitor what's gonna happen with commissary. Part of what we adopted is to keep an eye on commissary, commissary revenues. How it affects the overall performance, so.
It'll be interesting to see what we hear back from the lawyers on Oskota inmates.
Yeah, it was, it was initial opinion related it to the contract. Uh, via amendment to the contract or during the renegotiation time, but he asked for a copy of the contract, and that's where we're at right now as part of our. Interactions on that topic.
Maybe you have some answer maybe next, next week or something.
I'll send him an email tomorrow and see.
All right.
Any opinion on the contract itself, if that changes anything from his first email.
Okay.
It's been a good, it's been a good week that we asked for that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Just for clarification, we'll put this on uh for Thursday, just for the formality of adding this to your fee structure, so that's all. There's no question.
Good idea.
Wouldn't say retroactive if ever.
What are other vacancies? Uh, what are we waiting for?
I gotta wait for court procedures.
Is this what the union says we have to do?
Yeah, the union thing, I'll talk to you about that after.
Well, offline, did they give us something in writing? The union?
As far as what?
Why we gotta wait?
We'll follow a process that is in the best interest of the county and the employee and the union. So that. We make sure things are covered.
Department's also getting guidance from our council on this.
I can see there's some legal things in there too, yep, there are, I do know that.
Yeah, we've had communications with union, and I've talked to the attorney several times as far as the process surrounding this.
Incident.
Situation.
Yep.
It's not interesting.
I know, it's not just cut and dry, yeah.
You gotta make care.
Yeah, I know, it's not just cut and, anything else?
I appreciate it.
Commissioner?
No.
Commissioner wasn't, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, the zoning fee waiver.
I got you, you're next.
Hot seat.
Don't look behind you, because there's no one back there.
But that's a good reaction though. I believe you're, you must be talking about Matt.
Right. We don't have anything backing up this, so I still have to just explain it.
Um, we have an individual who has applied for a special use permit and site plan review for the sand and gravel pits. Um, that they created back here in September and um. I believe he is requesting um. The, requesting to waive those fees or um. For, for that special use and site plan review.
Why would we waive the fees? Mister Peter?
Um, the applicant feels as if he is um being probably singled out. Apparently, the claim is there are numerous numbers of soil, soil or sand and gravel pits in the county that are not having to go through the same process.
But those, many of those belong to farmers, do they not on farm property?
There're gonna be a lot of, each one is gonna be a different, different set of circumstances for him. Um, there are probably some that belong to farmers, or there's probably some that belong to individuals that may have started those pre-zoning um. I'm not, I'm not aware of all the ones that the um, that Mister Miller is talking about, but each one has, has its own little story, so um.
So is this?
So if we.
Go ahead.
If we waive this, then are we setting a precedent, we waive everybody's?
Um.
And I'm not willing to do that.
It's, it's a possibility.
Yeah, no, I don't wanna go there.
It, it's a possibility.
I don't know about the rest of your commission meeting.
Well, I think there's a lot more that we need to talk about regarding this topic before. Make that statement. Well, does the planning commission, did the planning commission vote to waive this?
No, no.
Um, what's the planning commission?
Planning commission, this, this is set to go in front of the planning commission at our March meeting, March twenty seventh.
So what's he, what did he initially ask for?
So. This basically came about as, as a result of a couple complaints for a property that, that man had purchased back in September. And through discussions with him, um. It, it doesn't appear as if he is running a commercial, commercial sand and gravel pit off of this property, so as part of that, the, the ordinance in the agricultural road preservation district requires special use and site plan approval for that project, so.
So these are the sand and gravels that are, that are currently there, probably being used by the property owners and outside, are they commercial?
Once again, I, I have no idea, we'd have to do a little bit of research into some of them.
Okay.
The defining commercial is, is um. The definition of commercial, there's no real actual definition in the ordinance for, for this actual use um. Basically going off of the plain language of it, so for instance, in, in the zoning ordinance, there is a definition, or let's say a restaurant. Um, for, for this particular use, the commercial removal and processing of. Sand and gravel and other minerals, there is not a definition in the ordinance for it.
Maybe.
The commercial side of it is not defined.
And therein lies the challenge, and why the, the fee waiver should be considered, um, the planning commission uh. Needs to look at this globally throughout the, the entire ordinance, which would potentially impact these other locations that have been mentioned. Uh, i- if the ordinance is not tied down, Ryan's gonna have a very hard time enforcing, if we don't. Define what commercial means versus any other removal. There's gonna be an issue now trying to enforce that ordinance with that void sitting there, but the hope is, is through this process, Ryan will work with the planning commission to lock that down. Now, should this applicant pay for that zoning ordinance interpretation really, or uh any amendments that might come uh as a result of the conversation? That's the question, should this one applicant have to pay to have that looked at and probably, probably um. Fine tuned a little bit, I just so that we all understand what it is we're enforcing. Um, so he just happens to be the first one out of the gate, and that's where we ran into the challenges.
Right, we've run into this problem when people are running a business out of their residential property. And, and the difference is, is it residential or commercial, and commercial is, are you doing something to make money?
Sure, sure.
Now, if a farmer's taking sand out to put, to, to put underneath the cows, or to fill a spot to fill his barn, or something like that, that's using property. That's using his property on his property. That, and then that would be the same as the guy that buys an empty lot, goes over and takes a whole foot. To put a foundation in, or to, to put a foundation for his whole barn. We would not call that commercial because he's using it as his own self. Now, if somebody's mining something out and they're selling it.
Process against selling it.
And, and I can probably think of a few places that's happened in the county, but.
In, in the applicant's defense, um, it's very, very possible, this is one of the uses that the state is taking control of.
Right.
Like, like solar and wind energy, the, this is another.
But they haven't done that yet, they're still debating that.
There, there is an effective date for that, but I haven't exactly. The state hasn't said exactly what date it is when they're going to do that, so in the applicant's defense, he quite possibly may be. The first one since I've been here and the last one that has to go through this process because of the way the state is. Taking control over that, so.
Well.
I, I do, I do agree with him in that regards, um, he is. Others after him may not have to go through that process, or come to see us, they'll have to do that at the state level.
Let me introduce another riddle for you as to why this gets so murky, and I'll relate this to a. Court decision that came through on sign ordinances. Uh, a number of years ago, uh, community had a sign ordinance that allowed temporary signs, and we're talking in this case, those yellow signs you see on the side of the road with the lights going off on them. And the community said you can have this temporary permit for thirty days, but on day thirty one, the sign has to be taken down. So when that was taken to court, the question was, what is it on day thirty one? That makes this sign suddenly a hazard to health, safety, or welfare, because that's what the ordinance has to be based upon. And of course, there's no answer to that, there, there's, there's nothing that happens on day thirty one, it didn't become more dangerous, it didn't become a health hazard, it didn't affect the welfare. So in effect, that ordinance was struck down saying, there's no temporary signs, you just allow it, and that's it. We have in our ordinance, uh, a stipulation on site plan review that says you have to get, go through the site plan review process to do the commercial um. Excavation, whatever you wanna call this, but we don't define what commercial is, number one, so that's a problem. And number two, if this wasn't for commercial. Is it suddenly no longer health, safety, or welfare hazard, what is it about it being commercial that suddenly trips this into the site plan review process and nine hundred dollars? And, and that's what we've gotta wrestle with.
And, and as well too, I, I will state this, um, the five hundred dollar special use permit fee, the four hundred dollars for the site plan review fee um. The actual cost for this meeting will be much less than that, um, so if you're gonna look at it from that standpoint, um. I've had another experience in the past at my township where an individual had actually asked to. Just be charged the cost of the actual meeting, and, and we didn't, we didn't approve that, because there are, there are fees involved, this is a special use permit, so there's a notice that has to come in the paper. There are some fees from the mailing standpoint that the county will have to absorb from there. So the cost for the meeting is, is much less than the nine hundred dollars that. That the application, in this particular instance. There won't be. Sometimes I have to notice forty, fifty, sixty properties, and it's extremely time consuming and, and a lot of letter system down.
What about?
The case in this one.
What about the individuals that live in that area that complained about all the noise and?
So the individual that will still go through has a special use permit, so it does get advertised in the paper, a minimum of fifteen days prior to that public hearing, they will have an opportunity to, to come to the public hearing and offer their comments. They can give them to me in writing, they can give them to me via email, and those will be provided to the planning commission, so, um, it's all part of that process, um.
What does the road commission say about that road, I mean, it's been newly paved, it's not meant for big heavy trucks, is my understanding.
I'm, I'm getting different answers, um. I'd like to have Pat give us an answer on that at the road commission on it, I, I believe he's told me it is class A. And so that Churchill Township tell me that it's not class A, um.
I had a road commissioner tell me it was class A.
So, so I've heard two different stories, um, I, I don't. There's gotta be a pretty easy answer to that.
So then I should be out, if it's class A, then I should be able to stand up to those heavy trucks.
I've, I've had someone tell me it was used as class, it was, it was built with class A asphalt. But I don't know if it's the thickness of what a class A road is supposed to be, so I'm, I'm, I don't know what that means exactly.
Well, I go to the road commission to ask.
Is this gonna go in front of the planning commission?
This is preliminary hearing, the set date for it is August, or excuse me, March twenty seventh, so yeah.
Well, I just don't act on it after the planning commission makes any decision on it. Whether they're gonna waive it, whether they're in favor of waiving it or not, I'd rather hear from the road, or hear from the planning commission, I don't want us to proceed that.
And I'd like. One best me, I, I will have a better idea of what the actual costs are here, I'm assuming. Once I place the ad in the paper, which will be here either at the end of this month or the very beginning of March, um. I'll know exactly what that cost for that advertisement and exactly how many letters I've had to send out and.
I'd also like to know what the road commissioner says about that road.
Right.
I don't want that new blacktop there, and then because it's not the right thickness, it's all door up. So what a waste of money that would be. Lots of it. Okay, sounds like there's a lot of stuff that has to be covered. Go ahead.
Um, I think this is just kind of a, a good example of, you know, as a county, as we progress. We get into things that we haven't seen before. I know for sure, I've only been in this county now for eight years, but I'm, I'm in construction. And I definitely know there are a lot of these operations going on, so I think this is just kinda brought to the head, the fact that we need to address this. We need to, you know, I think we need to clean it up, but in my eyes is, we know these. I feel very confident that this is happening throughout the county. How is it fair that we just single out now, you know, here, this case, so. I really think it's important that, you know, there's some real good, you know, smart decisions made here, but they definitely need to get cleaned up, so it's fair all the way across the board.
Yeah, I would like to know where those. Areas are, you know, you said they're throughout the county, just email me and let me know where they are, so I can go look.
We've had a few people reach out um in the past week or so, past couple weeks, um, that have a pit or some sort of, something similar to it on their property, wanting to know how it's going to affect them, um.
Are they selling, are they processing and selling it?
Like I, like I tell them, it kinda all depends, and each one is gonna be separate.
But are they?
Individual that has reached out to me isn't technically processing, and that's how they bought the property, but people do come in and pull sand off the property, um.
Is he selling it?
Nah, they haven't told me for sure if they're selling it or not, so um. Just because you're selling it doesn't mean there's not another benefit to it as well, so sometimes it's, um. It might be here, I'm gonna give you a truckload of this, you bring me some gravel later on, or.
Still bartering, it's still business. Bartering is still business, I know businesses that do that all the time, and it is a business.
So yeah, some, there are people out there who wanna kinda know what's going on with, with their property, and, and it's difficult. To just throw everybody in the same category.
I think, I think Commissioner Scott is.
Thing we ran with the RVs when I was on the planning commission, we know they're all over the county, and they're living in them, we know they are. They don't have hooked up the facilities or anything, we know of, of some of them that got uh porta potties next to them. We had to start someplace. It's not singling somebody out, you just gotta start someplace, somebody's, where you start someplace and then end someplace, it's like a thunderstorm, it just. Doesn't rain all over the whole country, it starts someplace and ends someplace.
Right.
Right, but in order to start someplace, you, you have to have, as I use the words, it needs to be cleaned up.
They're writing in the, in the ordinance.
Right, and at the same time, the applicant is actually looking for, this is a special use that is allowed in the district, um. Based on the planning commission's approval, um, so this is a business that he's looking for approval to do, which. Depending on the weather, on the day of the weather, I mean, we, we could be, we, he could be working again in March or the end of March, or very early in April, so. So getting it to the planning commission is the first step, it is a conversation.
Okay. Then we'll wait. Any other comments, commissioners?
I don't have, no, I mean, I think, I think I see where Commissioner Scott's getting at, he, he's referring to this as we're just. Going back to the old ways of doing things, that's how it was, so we're gonna continue.
No.
That's not this at all, I mean, this is brought out, it's in front of us now, and we need to make sure to get the process done right. You know, and then we move forward from there, whether, whether it be, I think we do need to get to that point where. We get it cleaned up, and then moving forward, we know at this level of whatever that operation is legally, then you're gonna have to buy a special use permit, you're gonna have to follow the way we have it. But we need to really get it cleaned up first, before we can get to that point.
Okay.
That's the planning commission.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay, county building entrance improvements and. Parking lot resurfacing.
Okay, before I get out too far in front of the board, um. Last meeting, or we had a, just a brief conversation in my uh weekly report, I wrote about a, a. An individual who came in and expressed concern about the entrance to the county building with the slope on that sidewalk and the inability to open the doors without a push button. I would like to just send that out for uh proposals, just so that we get an idea of what that would cost to fix, it's not uh locking us into actually having to do it. Uh, but it is something, hearing more and more uh as the years go by about people having difficulty getting into the building, and it is the only entrance. Uh, for the public to the building, so maybe something to uh, uh, move up on our priority list. The second item, the parking lot over by the memorial across the street from the county building, uh, seems to have an issue with getting some pretty significant potholes, and to the point that you could um. Do some damage to your vehicle if you hit one, uh, the road commission, fortunately. Uh, the road commission fortunately came in and filled the two big ones that had the cones in them, uh, this last week, but that parking lot is really breaking up. I would like to send an RFP out again to get the cost for paving that over, just putting, uh, uh. You know, likely the asphalt, but getting that fixed once and for all. Uh, we will be putting an RFP out for a similar type project out at Transit as soon as MDOT approves it. But, um, it just, it's time, if we're going to do it, uh, bring these RFPs back. Have you considered the proposals and get on somebody's schedule to get it done?
Where's this parking lot at?
Right across the street from the county building, um, uh.
Next to the evil.
Yeah, next.
Oh, okay.
Memorial is across the street there as well, uh, in front of the.
I know, I know where it is.
Yeah. So if you're okay with that, I'll, I'll just get those out here in the next week and.
See what the cost is.
Find out and bring it all back and check it out.
Okay.
So what are we going to use for, uh?
Money.
The, the, the doors, what are we going to use for, uh, um, apples, apples, uh? Bid, are we just going to ask for two doors, uh, thirty six inches?
I would submit that we would ask for an ADA compliant entrance and then let the. Bidders tell us how that would work. And I certainly don't know. I, I mean, I know there are width requirements, but I have.
Entrance and exit.
Assuming that that'll fit, I mean, I, I assume you can have, you have the width there to do an entrance and exit. But I don't know that for a fact, but again, put that on the bidder to research and make sure it's compliant.
And there's, there's nothing we can do with the front entrance. I mean, the ramp there is pretty nice.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to reverse, and the, the point is we can only have one entrance, okay? One secure entrance to that building. And I wasn't here when the decision was made, uh, to put it at the southeast entrance. Um, but just in, in talking with people who were here, there are issues with, uh, uh, queuing of people when they come in. There's no, um, hallway, for instance, for everybody to walk in. As soon as you're in the building, you're in the building and there's quite a large area in that lobby. But I don't know that. I mean, I wasn't here.
That's, and the lobby hits use for other things too. Uh, the sheriff's. Sales, mortgage sales happen in there. That's the commonplace that that, that happens. And, uh, I think a lot of the attorneys, uh, use it for interviews and whatever they do and.
Just asking.
Lot for, um, people that are filling out PPOs and like the longer forms.
Okay.
Send them around there. Yeah, there's, because there's a table.
And, and on top of that, the security committee didn't think, feel that they could adequately have the security there at that point.
Okay, just asking.
Yeah, no, no.
No, it's, it's a good point because I feel we're probably going to have to do some pretty serious concrete work on the outside to be ADA. Approved and that could get pretty expansive because we're going to have to do some terracing almost.
I think so, yeah.
He has some serious things to do on the inside too, according to OSHA. I'll talk about that later.
Okay, but likely, I mean, just even to make that whole entrance work, you know, we've been to other, uh, county buildings that are set up very nicely. And this, this particular layout doesn't lend itself to a lot of, uh, a lot of footprints that I see elsewhere.
What, where are we at with our fund? What is our room? Numbered after, we just finished our last five hundred thousand to the budget.
All that was, um, calculated at one time. Gosh, it's either one point two or one point seven million. It's, it's more than a million.
It is one point two.
I think so.
Karen, do you know?
Last time on the number about one point nine million, but that's. You have five hundred thousand coming out of that.
And a couple of projects, yeah, a couple of projects in process yet to like the, the GPS project is still ongoing. The sheriff's vehicles. Uh, and also there's been substantial interest earned in that account too. So I'm. And that obviously is a good thing, but just in that last quarter, it was something in the neighborhood of twenty seven thousand. Uh, in interest that that's earned. So I'll take a look at that and do the math and come back with you at the more. Uh, focused answer, but roughly.
Twenty seven thousand in a quarter, that's fantastic.
Now again, thank you, treasurer. She's doing the investing and really doing.
We told Karen that, Karen, you're doing a great job. That's great.
Okay. Run to five C now, property tax limitation, documents.
This comes out of a, the budget committee and they were asked the board to, uh, consider. Uh, allocating roughly three thousand dollars out of what we have in contingency to produce education materials. Related to the property tax limitation, uh, proposal that will be on the ballot in May. And in this case, we're talking about, uh, documents that will explain what that is and, uh, some facts and figures. So, uh, you know, just, uh, what, what, what is the millage and what, how did all of this transpire over? You know, the last fifty nine years and why is it important to the county that voters consider this? Um, this is, um. Limited strictly to education materials. Uh, there is a fine line between that and brochures that encourage people to vote one way or another. That's not what we're talking about. Strictly talking about the facts, uh, that are tied to this. Uh, and they are, um, frankly, I mean, facts that we can all draw together, but we're talking about likely printing costs and things of that nature. Uh, so that, that was the request. Now we've got two commissioners on that committee. The treasurer is also on that committee as am I, but we can certainly. Field any questions?
I talked to Mr. Booth today and, um. You did too? Okay, so hopefully we have something more on the budget committee tomorrow. About that. So I think you got the printing costs and some other costs. Okay.
Both, three thousand dollars bigger.
It's just a three thousand.
Is there any other place we can take the money?
Donations.
Uh, I could look at, um, I, I don't know. Look it up here. Um, I don't know that we've budgeted anything for, you know, printing or advertising or anything like that in the board budget. I know there is some in, uh, administration budget that could be, you know, transferred for that purpose. It's not three thousand dollars, but potentially that some could come from there.
Well, Karen will be collecting the money if we get it. Can we, can you get it out of the tax revision fund?
No.
No, it has to be used for foreclosure prevention.
Okay.
Sorry, I would if I could.
Yeah. So we did this when we tried for the headway last time. Uh, the commissioners approved, didn't they say the same thing, three thousand?
I talked to you about that. Three thousand and maybe another place you can come from. Okay. Any other talks about this?
No, I don't know. That's.
Okay.
Where it is, take draft a resolution for that.
Okay. Appointment of the Osawa Valley Community Mental Health Authority Board of Directors. Uh, currently, uh, Mr. Clacking is part of that and he is involved completely. And I think he wants to be reinstated to that and that the board wants him. I highly suggest that, uh, we do that. I'm on that same committee with him and he does a great job. He knows what he's talking about, knows what he's doing and they enjoy having him on there. So I recommend that we do. Put it back on.
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. You have any problem? Resolution. Next, next meeting. Okay, thank you. Okay, resolution. I took care of that. Amendment to opioid settlement advisory committee.
Drop that.
Scratch that.
Oh, we dropped that, yeah. We have nine one one on there. Jesse, you are up.
My turn.
Your turn.
Thank you for reminding me.
Short and sweet. I need a resolution from the Board of Commissioners, um, stating that. We are the primary PSAP in Ogama County. It was overlooked. Um, when we became an authority and I need that for.
Primary what please?
The primary PSAP, Public Safety. That's what it stands for.
The primary of public safety.
Association.
Okay, gotcha.
I got a call from, is Will still the?
He's the assistant, uh, chairman. Yeah, our chair's in Alaska, so I called him and talked to him about it. So he knew I was coming tonight.
William, when the vice chair called me and explained this is, this is the boilerplate, boilerplate. Type stuff that should have been done when, when nine one one was split apart. Sounds, uh, they talked with you, Tim?
Jesse talked to me. I, I'm familiar with it.
Yeah. Sounds like a formal idea that wasn't taken care of, then shouldn't be taken care of.
I did hand rec today something I typed up, um, the state of Michigan. Uh, even so that you guys had something for your next meeting. Uh, you could look at it, but it is the resolution they're looking for.
Good. So. Timo. Fabrica.
Can we do, can we do that next meeting too? Okay, that'll be on the agenda next meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment?
It's like just open discussion.
Yes, come on, right?
Come right up here. You get the chair just like everybody else.
I want to ask some questions so I can get.
Okay.
Smarter and how, how some of this goes, uh.
Please state your name.
Walter Arneis. I love. General City.
He's not a friend.
Oh, you got a new friend.
I don't have any friends, so you're lucky.
I was, I was concerned about how we have four elections in the state. We have the primary, then we have the May and August and the, and the, uh.
November.
Yeah, the November one. And, uh. From past life, you realize that, uh, May and August elections are for the items that you want to try to get pushed through without a whole lot of public input.
That's not true.
Well.
That is not true.
Well.
Well, this, this year we have a presidential.
I.
Primary in, in, in.
And I understand.
February, okay? That doesn't happen in any other elections like.
Right, so we have two elections and I've realized the state allows you to do that.
And May election is the school election. Now you can piggyback things on top of that. But that election is just for, it's set up, the May date is set up for the schools. If the schools don't put anything on, then, then you have to, you have to, are we allowed? We'd have to, we'd have to fund the whole thing separately, right? Are we allowed at all to put a?
Yes.
Question on in, in May, if the schools do not participate.
The rule that, uh, applied to the February, uh, primary is the same rule that applies in May. I, I think we end up paying regardless. I mean.
But I mean, can we, can we put on an election in May if the school does not have anything on?
I don't know the answer to that.
We had to research it.
Give me a sheet of paper.
I don't have it on me. Oh, I have it in the email.
It's, it's designed for elections. Whoever decides to put an item on the ballot, okay? If it's a school only, then the school pays for it. If it, if it helps the, the, uh, the county or the township, then they have to. Pay for it, okay? So they can piggyback on that, but.
Piggybacking, yes, but, uh, I'm not sure that if the school doesn't have anything, you can have an election.
Right. So my concern is, is how do you get, how, what's the process, which I've been trying to research? How do I put something on the ballot?
You would addition the township or would it affect the township? Would it affect the county?
Are you referring to your?
Yes.
Five oh one C stuff or township?
So if I have a five oh one C.
Three, yeah.
Uh, C three, and I want to have a millage sent to me and you collect it. What's the criteria for that?
We'd have to be the fiduciary for that five oh one C three. We would be the ones that receive the money.
Yes, I, I understand that. And then you pass it on to, without a grant, right?
I think that's.
No.
Go ahead, Karen.
Anyone with a five oh one C three can ask the county to put on a millage, collect money and give it to that five oh one C. That is, that does not happen.
Yeah.
It has to be a county provided service.
Oh, yeah, we do use, yeah.
Otherwise you'd be having churches in here left and right asking you to.
You're right, you're right, thanks.
It's not just nonprofits can come to you and ask for a millage. That is not allowable.
See, we're, we're doing that with the shelter right now. We're, we're passing on shelter services. Right, we're show, show their services and then we'll contract with the service.
So countywide services.
Yeah.
Yes.
For animal shelter.
Yeah.
It's not.
So did they lose their, when my tax dollars go to them, did they lose their tax exempt?
No.
So they're tax exempt, they get grants from the state and I'm going to support them as well. That's, that's what I was finding out if that's truly legal that you can do that.
Yes, you can. But, um, like I said, we have a contract with them and right now they're losing money. Even with our contract, because of all, all the expenses.
So, so that's a business then?
It's a five oh one C three.
Profit business. A nonprofit is still a business.
Yes, it is.
So we have a certain amount of county money that's, that's going to the animal shelter?
But it's not enough. We pay so much.
No, 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 you're, you're taking it out of context.
Yeah.
There's money going there, but it's a contract to take care of the ser, the, the, it's, they're taking care of the animals that our. Animal control officers is, is, uh, take, picking up.
Taking to them.
So, so we're, we're contracting with them to take these animals. And there's limits to the contract, okay? We're not just donating money to them. It's a contract to.
I, okay, I understand how a contract works. Okay. And I'm, and I'm fine with that. Okay, so.
I just don't want you to make it sound like we're just giving them money to operate. We're not.
No, we're not.
So if this millage passes, then what do we do?
Will.
Is it your money or is it their money?
It's our money.
Our money.
That doesn't seem the way it.
Does, for them.
I wasn't able to find the verbiage on, on what that is on the, uh, it's going to be on the ballot.
I have it right here.
So.
I didn't bring my pad with me.
Well, that was the last, last meeting or.
I might be able to.
So that money is going to the general budget?
It's earmarked for, for taking care of the animals from animal control.
It'll be a special fund.
Yeah.
Because it's a millage fund, it's a special fund.
It can only be spent for certain, for what it's passed for.
For shelter services.
Service for the county.
Doesn't say what shelter. Animals, shelter services. And it's up to this board to decide what services that will pay for.
And what shelter.
And what shelter that pays for or whatever, yeah. Doesn't go to a specific shelter. Until we decide where it goes.
Right.
This, this board.
Okay, I just, I'm, I mean, myself personally, I look at it as, is, you know, these people. People take their animals to them and so on and so forth. And it's not that I'm not an animal person. It's just that. Some of these people create this almost like a full-time business. They're always asking for donations and everything like that. And, and I, I do a lot of work with two or three different charities.
Can I ask you, can I ask you what kind of five oh one C three you have?
That I have?
Yeah.
No, I don't have.
Oh, you don't have one?
I thought you said you had one.
No, I didn't.
Sorry, misunderstood.
I, I misunderstood.
I'm associating with two or three of them, okay?
Okay.
And when I seen this on there, okay, and knowing what they are, I'm going, well, why can't we go to the county and start to. Start to ask for things. So it's, it's only because you have a contract with them.
That's right.
Is the only reason that, well.
So the reason we have a contract with them, it's a county service. It's a service that we need. Our, our deputy who works for the county, that's where he takes the stray dogs and cats. And mountain lions if we had them too. So it's a service and, and right now this village does not. Have them specifically as who we pay, but it's who we're currently working with.
That's who we currently.
It's who we currently work with and it's a service to the county that we need. We need somewhere for these stray dogs and cats to go. But it's not specific to them. It's like, it's like Commissioner Scott said, so if the millage.
But it's not specific to them. It's like, it's like Commissioner Scott said, so if the millage passes, the, the money comes in. We're the fiduciary and then we make a decision to make sure that they're doing their job and if they're doing their job, which is a service to our county, then we will give them the money.
So my question is, is that money just going for the services that the county needs? Or is that going for everybody that brings animals into it? Is it divided separately? I mean, are we just taking care of? If we have an officer pick up three dogs, takes it in, that money's going to go to take care of those dogs? Or, or cats or whatever it is, or is it going to do the whole facility?
It would be for the whole county. It would be for the whole county.
But the whole facility? So.
No, 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 I, I understand, but it'd only be the services that they provide, not their. Not their place, not their building. Okay, now, once they get the money in their possession, if they're the ones that we select and they need a building improvement, then they could use that money for that purpose. But it, it, it still have to show us that they're still providing the services.
To us.
Is that correct, Tim?
Yeah, it, it is. It, it, uh, solidifies that the facility will be available for the county's use. We won't own it, uh, we won't operate it. It's assuring that we have a place to take those animals.
But if Joe Blow down the street has five dogs that he takes there, he goes there and drops them off. The county money is going to support those dogs too because they basically are no kill facility.
There's.
Also, you're talking about they can use it for capital improvements. Okay? And my thing was is, is we made some large donations to, to a, a charity. Five one C three charity and it was supposed to be they took care of veterans in, in therapy and so on and so forth. And all of a sudden they had new parking lots, all the stalls, all the type of thing.
And the service didn't happen.
Right, that's what they, what it was supposed to be used for is, you know, my concern is, is. I mean, if somebody brings fifty dogs in there or fifty animals in there that has nothing to do with the county. Is that money still going to take care of them? Is that why they're still?
There's a fee for them to bring those dogs there. If somebody brings a dog in and drops it off. There's a substantial fee for them to drop that dog off. They just don't drop the dog off, say, here you are. There is a fee for that.
So it's only the ones that the. That the county officer would bring in?
Can I ask, is this one of these five oh one C three groups you're involved with is a animal shelter?
No, we, we have, we raise about four or five hundred thousand dollars a year. And we pit different charities, okay, to donate the money to.
So you're a service club? I, I, I don't know where the money's coming. That generates money to donate?
Yes, we're a five oh one C three.
Okay, I understand.
We'd have the whole thing. We, we put on events, okay?
Yeah.
To raise money.
Right.
To give to charities.
Okay.
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 And my concern was, just like that, is, is you learn, okay? Cause once you give them the money, it's, it's very difficult for you to control how they. Even though you try to get them to, to give you input back. It's not that easy to do. Again, and like I said, a lot of the money was used for capital improvements and things that really didn't pertain to what they presented to us.
Okay.
To request for the money.
Well, here, let me, I'll, I'll read you the millage question. I have it right here. So animal control, shelter services, millage question. For the purpose of supporting funding for county animal program services, including sanitary humane inefficient animal shelter services. Shall the constitutional limit? That's basic thing. The rest of it is assessed, uh, on one year of all property within the county of Oklahoma increased by two tenths of one mil. For a period of six years, twenty-four to twenty-nine inclusive. If, if approved and levied, this millage will raise an estimated two hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. And sixty cents in the first calendar year of the levy. If approved and, uh, levied the portion of the millage show. Maybe, may also be distributed in accordance to state law to the downtown authorities of city of West Branch and township of West Branch. So, um. Basically, just as I said before, we will contract, the commissioners will contract the services needed. Uh, where this money can go. Now, we're not even held that if there's another shelter, we could split this money and send it to two different shelters. In the, in the agreement, we'll, we'll have a, we'll have an agreement that'll be written up. We could limit and say that none of these, none of this funding could be used for capital improvement. We could do that.
And you say. Are they losing money on your? On the counties?
Yes.
Well.
Yes, what?
Yes, they are. I've already talked, I've already talked to.
You said yes, yes to what?
They, it's costing more for them to keep our dogs than what they're getting from us.
Just for the dogs that you get from.
From us. We have a contract, the contracts were signed, but.
What's?
But what has happened is inflation has gone skyrocket. And they're paying astronomical now, so it's costing them now more than what they're receiving. I've already, I've been down there several times.
I mean, like how many dogs a month do you take to them?
I don't have.
At a year, aren't we?
We're at, um, our contract is, uh, for the base fee is fifty dogs, I believe it is per year. Yeah, for each dog, in addition to it, it's a separate fee.
Okay, I'm just, so.
Well, I don't have the contract right here where I could show you what, what we currently have with them. They're asking if they, if they're, they were, they came to us asking for a village to go to them. We had to explain to them, you cannot get a village to you. It has to come through the county. And then we'll do it in a contract method.
Cause I, I'm, they're, to be tax exempt, okay, they can't have, you know, us, us. You can't be just supported by one, one person, the county, okay? But on your taxes, you're able to contribute part of your, make a donation on your taxes this year, I believe, or maybe even last year.
If you're a five oh one C, if, if you're donating money to a five oh one C three nonprofit group, I think that you can take an exemption on your own.
What, what the state has chosen to do is, is on your tax return, when you do your state tax return, you can check a box to go to the community society. And they have to file for a grant from the state and then the state will reimburse them money. Okay, they'll distribute that. If like, if everybody in the state don't use two dollars or five dollars.
Okay.
Then they'll.
But the money is not going, when you check the box, the money doesn't go directly. It goes to a grant program.
Yes, through a grant program.
And so then the grant pays them.
Right.
And that's pretty much, that's, that's, in other words, that's what we're gonna do too. I mean, call it a grant or call it a contract. We'll collect the money here at the county level and then the board of commissioners will decide where that money goes. Whether it's, whether it's that group that came to us in the first place or another group that comes along. I can't say this, the management, the management of that group won't change.
Right, so there's a, there, there is a criteria that you have to be able to come to you to ask for money then, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And who, who has that information?
We, we, we'll take it, we'll take it one by one.
Right, but I mean, as far as what I have to be or how, or not me, okay? Or what you have to be to be able to come to you. You can't be a church, you can be a, you can be a library.
We don't, we don't have that information written up in front of us right now.
Fundamentally, it'll have to be a service that the county provides. Okay, and we are, we are limited by statute what we can do, so there.
Right.
Some things we can't do.
That was the thing, so you already have a contact with them, that's where you can pass.
Yes.
Well, but it's a service, it's a service that the county, we decided we, we, well, we use.
We're going a little bit further and just, we're gonna, this'll take us a little, another step further for county services. Right now, it's, it's focused. Nobody else can just take a dog and the county pays for it. The animal control officer takes the dog.
Yes.
Right now, that's the contract we have with this particular business, nonprofit business. We have a contract that they, our animal control officer is the only person that takes it in there. Now, we're, we're asking a millage question that's going to expand that. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're going to expand that a little bit further out and allow the public to be able to use the service.
Well, they'd be able to anyway.
Okay.
That five oh one C three, they, the public can use it regardless. What we're doing is assuring that we have a place to take those animals and those, those animals will be cared for.
Cause that place, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have any place to take them.
Right, that's what I'm opposed, I mean, the thing that I'm opposed to, I have no problem with the county. No problem that you have a contract with them and no problem that, that you're paying them X amount of dollars for every dog and so on and so forth. But supporting the rest of the facility with tax dollars is where I have the issue.
Okay.
We'll have a contract that specifies, these are the services we expect for the dollars that you receive and there will be accountability. They will be required to provide a report to this board, um, it, really on demand, you know, but certainly at least once a year. As to how that money has been spent, how each of these criteria have been addressed that are in the contract.
Well, obviously, if it's five oh one C three, you can, you can go and check that, that's.
That's public. It is.
It's public information, so.
And, and on that point though, that you disagree with it, I, I'm not trying to convince you to agree or disagree. If you want to disagree with the, with a millage question, that's.
Right.
Totally American.
I, I understand.
I, I'm probably with you on a, on a lot of, uh, millage questions.
I mean.
You know.
I'm just. I'm trying to educate myself to learn. Now that I understand that you have the contract, okay, that changes a lot of it.
Yeah.
And the second thing was, part of my experience is distributing money, okay?
Yeah.
To different operations, I mean. The, the corporation or this is in Florida that we do, okay? And we're starting to get up into the millions now to where you give it to people and it used to be, you know, this group of veterans and that group of veterans, the turtles and, uh, the dolphins and this and that. But they were all legitimate groups, okay, and you could pass all that money around. I mean, we had a whole.
Hey, we have, we have a legitimate five oh one C three that, that Friends of the Deer Refuge that takes care of the, the deer park in the north end of the county. We'd be more than happy to take some of your money. How can I apply with you?
Yeah, we would.
I'm serious. The, 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 the friends, uh, uh, we have a couple of fundraisers coming up. We got a spaghetti dinner coming up in April.
Do we, as a county, support that, the deer park?
Yeah, the county owns the deer park. Okay, and we, we run the deer park up there, the county does. But there is a five oh one C three Friends of the Deer Refuge that's, that's supported. Now, whenever something is needed, the county will pay for it, but the, the friends will go and donate the money toward it. Like right now, we're gonna get the roof on the hall re- uh, replaced. And the friends are gonna pay, uh, donate to the county to cover that expense. Right now, there's a, a five oh one C three being developed for the High Banks property over in Millstown, shit, off the Red River. Off the Red River, we've, we've, we've adopted that as one of our parks in the county. What, what helps us is, is the expenses aren't paid by taxpayer money that way. If we have a, a fiduci- uh, we have a, a five oh one C three that's donating money to it. Right now, we have three, well, we have four active parks. Pointer Park is just out there getting the mo- the grass mowed. But, uh, the RV park on the, on the, uh, business loop, we have that. And we make money there. It, it makes, it makes money there and it supports the other parks too. So when we come out at the end of the year, our parks doesn't cost anything with taxpayer money. We're able to self-sustain so far.
I mean.
And the friends help.
I'm not opposed to contributing my.
Yeah.
My fair share.
I mean, get your address. We'll apply to your, uh, organization for some money. We, we need it.
I'm going.
If you, if you, have you been to the nature park, the county nature park at, at the north end of the county?
I used to go to the nature park before you were born.
Okay, well, I don't think we're too far a- apart there, but. I, I'm prematurely graying. I don't think at my age I should be graying yet, but.
Well.
I bet we're pretty close.
I'm seventy-nine.
You got ten on me.
So I.
You got two on me.
I used to go there when I was, when I was like two years old.
Okay.
I got, used to take rich packers at that, at that time and feed the deer, so.
It likes. They like frosted mini wheat. That's what our caretaker does feed them.
Oh, yeah.
Our caretaker feeds them. Anyway, you've seen that, we've doubled the size of the fencing there and that, and the friends help that.
It, but back to my, I still would like to, is there someplace in writing that, that allows me to know what I can put on a ballot? Who can come to you and put something on a ballot? How, how is that determined?
If it's a service.
It could be a county service.
A county.
Or a service that the county wants to provide.
Yep.
Well, there's probably some services out there, other counties provide that we don't. If you identified something like that.
Is that a law? You know?
You can check with the Bureau of Elections. It's not open for just five oh one three C fundraising.
I have a five oh one C three, we provide a service. We get nothing from the county.
And, and that's fine. I mean, I don't know if you go out and, and raise money.
Yeah.
For that.
Yes, we do.
And like I said, that's.
Well, I don't know if they, if you even ask the county for money.
I've never asked the county for money.
There you go, you're not.
Never.
If you don't ask.
And when I would ever ask.
You make a good point. There may be a service out there that you can ask. I think, prepare something, bring it to the commissioners. The commissioners are the ones going to make the decision.
That's.
If, if a millage question goes on.
Right.
And.
I mean, like. Know that everybody voted to have that go on the, on the, uh, ballot, okay? When it was presented, right?
We rolled on that last week.
Talking about the animal shelters?
Well, and Jenny was, uh, just, Jenny was absent. She could not vote.
This, I, I still have the question, like, like I was told, it's got to be a county service before it goes on the ballot.
Yeah.
And usually we have.
But, uh, that's what I was asking is if, okay, there was other things that.
Well, I can tell you, that particular incident represented us and that shelter came here and asked if they could get a millage to help pay for their shelter and we told them, no. You can't get a millage that goes directly to you. It has to come through the county and we have to disperse it outward. Okay?
We have to approve their expenditures, in other words. They can't just go willy-nilly and spend it. We have, as a board, have to approve it.
So do they send you a, a bill monthly?
They.
How many animals they have, or is it just a random fee for?
We got, we're, we're mixing two things here.
Yeah.
Right now, we have an animal control contract with them, okay? I don't know, I don't know what we'll craft. If the millage passes, we'll craft it at that point. There's no, there's nothing in writing now how, how this will.
Okay.
Execute.
Okay.
True.
It is, and it'll, there'll be a, a list of services that we expect in exchange for those funds.
Right, and some kind of, uh, uh, test to make sure that everything, uh, some kind of evaluation, how to make sure everything works, how it's working and everything.
That's fine, I would hope that that's, that's what we do.
We fund, we fund, uh, we fund MSU extension. Uh, we fund with tax money, we fund, um, uh, what, uh, cyber mental health. Uh, we fund different facilities and we always ask for reports. Usually annual reports back. No, it's not a millage, it's an. It's an appropriation.
Mission on aging is.
The commission and aging is, the library, you know.
I, right.
Yeah.
Like, curling.
So let's, please, don't bring that up. So let them free, don't bring that up.
Well, I'm just.
We tried there.
That doesn't go through the county though, does it? That, that goes straight right to the, to them.
Yeah, that's, um, right.
Just, just like, like townships, we don't have any control over townships. They, they generate a millage. When the money comes in, we pay them or.
It's their money.
It gets paid to them.
They collect their own. Anything that comes to us delay when we pay for the.
Right.
The tax roll.
Yep.
Well, some villages aren't controlled by the county. Like township ones and school ones.
Right.
And, and college ones.
Right. We have, we have some unique situations where we have private roads that are, that are, uh.
Oh, don't even talk about a road commissioner. Please, please, we're not road commissioners.
No.
I'll tell you where to go there.
No, 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 I've, I've been. But, okay, I mean, it's, they collect money for it. So there's, there's a state law that allows them to, to do that.
What the county does is, the county bills everybody for taxes. And then, you know, we end up distributing.
I'm fine. I don't.
That's what that lady does over there.
Oh, don't take too much of your time again.
No, 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 I'm.
They can't just spend the money the way, you know, they come and they tell us what they need money for. In other words, don't they? Like the others.
The county?
No, no.
Am I wrong?
Think you're going a little bit.
Over?
Little over. I don't think we'll get to that point, but we could.
Yeah.
We could, but I, I think that we'll, we'll set a condition of how much service we want and have some type of a.
I would think it would be run just like any business type of thing. I have a contract, you have a contract with me, you're gonna bring me animals and I'm gonna either euthanize them or I'm gonna keep them for so long or.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
See?
Well, it's a public meeting. They can leave anytime they want.
Yeah.
Have a good night, everyone.
Our shelter is a no kill shelter too.
Well.
Unless it's vicious or sick or something like that, yeah.
We'll meet here next Thursday at five thirty. Come on over.
Yeah.
Please come. I plan to come back a few times.
And of course, you can always zoom. People are on Zoom right now watching us.
I, I could, but you don't want me to get me started, okay? Because we don't have internet, because the township that I live in took the money that we got for internet and put a playscape in Leupton for the, for the kids. So
Okay.
What I do now is I just go out and sit on the playscape or go down the slide and.
Okay.
And that's my internet. I mean, seriously, I don't have.
Okay.
I don't have internet.
You're in Rose Township? Are you in Rose Township?
Yes.
Okay.
There's an article in the paper about it.
Well, if you get closer to town and you hook on yours, if you have a smartphone, you hook it on, you can, you can watch us on YouTube also. He's ever recorded.
Go to, go to McDonald's and sit.
Yeah. A lot of people do that.
Okay, guys, I'm.
Thank you.
I'm gonna keep, keep going.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You got a lot more answers than most people do, so.
Thank you, guys.
I'm really glad that you showed up.
Thank you.
Keep showing up.
Just spread that around.
Keep showing up.
We're here every Thursday.
Yeah.
Any more public comment?
Everybody.
Thank you for your comments.
I moved to it.
Thank you.
Okay. Push it to adjourn.
I moved to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.